We call the meeting to order, March 21, 2022.
General, we came to your prayer tonight, to Jesus, pray that you be with lead council members of their Lord, they make decisions for this city. We pray that you just lead God, take over each and every one of them, be with each and every one in this city. We ask this through Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to adjourn to the consent agenda? That discussion, I'd like to see the minutes, if they were 17th, pulled off for now because they don't look to be correct, and there's some typos. So removing the minutes of February 17, 2022. All in favor of approving the adjustments for less than $50 on the consent agenda? We're approving the consent agenda, but removing the minutes of February 17, but this time off of seven, so approving the adjustments for less than $50. All in favor? Motion carried. Hello, Ms. Gwen.
Good evening, everybody. Sorry.
We need to add a number four and five to the agenda. I'm sorry, I forgot. Number four needs to be approving the driveway at 3002 Main Street with the Family Dollar.
It's on, it's the Court Avenue, Court Avenue on there is where they need the drive.
Okay, what's that, Main Street?
Look at the, we're under reference.
It should be Court Avenue. Okay, so 30, 3318. For use of the property at 3002. That needs to be number four.
And what is it?
Uh, approval in the driveway for 3002 Main, uh, excuse me, 3318 Court Avenue for use at 3002 Main Street. It's the Family Dollar tree request. And number five, uh, temporary hire. Temporary hire, emergency temporary hire. Okay, mayor's report. I don't have anything at this time. Attorney's report?
So I did contact the Florida Association of City Clerks about their CAPS program. They did not have any volunteers available to help us right now, and they referred me to a municipal stacking agency. They unfortunately did not have any candidates that they could make available to us, which is how you're gonna get to add up number five on your agenda.
Clerk's report?
Okay, um, I put a flyer in there, it was for the ARPA in your paperwork. Also put three letters from the league, uh, these about Florida Power pipes. They're wanting to get us, uh, have us do a petition too. They've all done petitions.
President Penticola?
Penticola, Cresview.
And Neil.
Um, also in there is a letter from Mr. Burns on the Rev Plan, what their diamonds are. Those were all in your packet. What's not in your packet is, we got, um, we had the, the community center rented out for the 26th of March. It's been canceled. I'm gonna need a AP, a refund check cut for that Thursday, hopefully with the accountant's here. It was due to the sign down right here on Court Avenue, the, uh, sign against Jewish people. That is why they canceled it. They didn't want that at the entrance to what was going to be going on there. Yeah, I didn't realize it said it either, but it does. It's saying bad things about Jewish.
Where?
Right here.
Oh, he's talking about Kevin and Lynn's house.
Yes.
Yes.
It's about where the solar panels?
Yes, where all the solar panels are. So I wanted the city to, y'all be aware of, that's why they canceled their community center in there. The, uh, for Landell L.C. that's supposed to be here on the 26th. They came to look and they saw that sign and they didn't think it was appropriate when people were gonna be coming in from other places to, to the landfill. We don't have any code enforcement, so it's on the cardboard sign facing that way. I looked at it when, after they called me, I looked at it that next morning. I'm gonna need, uh, need an, actually another approval on the motion, maybe number six. Shirley Paul turned in an application to have her water, her sewer adjusted for a swimming pool. She turned in the proper paperwork to have it done with that, how many gallons that pool took and all that, and measurements of the pool.
What's her name, Shirley who?
Shirley Paul. She, she turned in, actually turned in the paperwork that's supposed to be turned in to get their pool adjusted. I wasn't sure, I know that I've heard, had heard Tracy in the past talk about sex offenders in the city limits. I got an email. There is a sex offender living in the city limits as of the other day. They've registered. I didn't know, I thought she had said something about a, a sex offender could not live in the city limits, but I was not sure on the matter.
Okay, we can move. I'm pretty sure y'all have an ordinance.
Yeah, there's an ordinance, which was saying. And I got an email from the offender watch list of an address where a sex offender.
You were saying that we have an ordinance on books then?
I remember, I thought Tracy had said it at one time. She thought we'd have one too.
I don't think it says they can't live here. I don't think it says that. I think it's, it's.
Well, that's why I'm checking. That's why I'm bringing it up because I wanna make sure.
I think it's.
I think it's so many feet to a school or church.
Children, churches and children.
I think we do have an ordinance.
It's an ordinance for it, but I don't think it says we can't have, they can't live in Vernon. I don't think it says that.
I wasn't sure, that's why.
I'm not sure, but I don't think so.
So many feet of a school or a church or something.
Because I know they had a discussion about a bus, it was a discussion about a bus stop where children was getting on the bus and someone did them near the bus stop. And that was a problem. That's when it all came up because somebody complained that the children in the bus stop was near where that person lived. And they wanted them to move from there.
I'm not very familiar with this.
But I don't know.
This is the address.
But I don't think we could say they can't live in the city of Vernon.
Well, I don't know. It's on the same street as one, but I'm not sure if that church is even there. Ms. Jordan, are you familiar with the ordinance that she's talking about?
I think y'all asked it in, um, 17 or 18. But I don't, I don't seem to have a copy. It was in, it was in 2018. I've got the publication. If I can get with the sheriff.
It's an out of state, it's, the person is from Georgia, actually. They've just moved here from Georgia. So it's not a person, somebody we know locally.
And Ms. Jordan, you said you would get one.
I'll check with the sheriff. He's the one that asked to deal with registration.
Ms. Michelle, you said you needed approval, you asked for this to be number six for Ms. Paul?
Yes, ma'am.
But prior to that, you asked for, and you didn't ask for it to be voted on, but do you need?
I would like to have, make sure because if I'm not here when they do billing, that she's gonna have to make sure the person replacing me knows.
So, okay, so number seven needs to be concerning.
Six was approval for billing.
On the community center.
Well, I think, yeah, I've got, I've got, um, I need 12 printed checks to pay the rest of the bills, that that's included in that. I've got two refunds, one from RAC and that refund from the community center. And then I have 10 that I could not pay online, that I did, I mean, I paid everything I could online, so I put them on online payments, but I've got water spigot, A&W, I've got, that are, need to be paid and I can't, I don't, I've tried to look at it, the system, and I'm just not familiar with printed checks on, I wouldn't even know which way to put, I'm gonna be honest, I, I wouldn't know which way to put the check in.
Okay, so what you're asking for is canceled. Approval to ask the CPA to do that while he's here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we need to make that number seven. How many did you say?
There's 12. I need 12. Counting, that's counting the two refunds, one for RAC and one from, for the community center and then 10 bills.
I got a question on that, on the checks. Why do we have to approve, just like the plug trick, I'm gonna tell you. A&W called me, it's been going on three weeks, about, and I called her about the check. And I know she, she don't know how to process it, and right now, it'll be two more weeks before, uh.
It might be Thursday.
I'm talking about before anyone has learned how to process it, but the thing is, the president and, and the vice president has to sign the checks and look at them. What I'm saying is, why, just say there's 13 checks the city needs to pay, no matter what it, what it's due. You know, that we approved two loads of rocks three weeks ago.
I understand what you're saying.
Why not, why not the council give the clerk approval to write the check, 'cause y'all got to sign? The president and the vice president has to sign them, and I have to sign off on it.
I understand that, but she's expressed that she can't even print those, so we're paying the CPA to do his normal job. But when there's something extra like that, we have to pay him to do it, and she's got 12, but she can't print for us to sign. That's the issue. What we can sign, we don't have to approve. But this is, because the CPA's having to do something extra, again, this one.
They don't have to print the checks on, with the payment.
And she doesn't know how to print the checks here in the office.
I can write my hand checks, but I don't, I can't do the ones on the computer. Cause my refunds are handwritten.
All I'm saying is, with that said, the CPA is, is getting a lick of the city.
Oh, yes, sir.
And.
If somebody teaches me how to do it, I mean, I could do it if somebody could show me, but.
We're looking at, you know, a couple of months before we get anyone to replace, at least a month. And if, if that person's not qualified or don't know how to do what you're talking about, we ain't gonna mess for long haul for a couple of months to see you, as far as paying the CPA big bucks to, to pay the bills. With that said, she's got a personal check, the city's got a personal check, checking account. Like, she could write a check, just like us, writing a check. I don't see as a council member, just say, A&W, A&W, two loads of rock. She's the clerk, she's filling in for the clerk, why can't she write a check and the president and the vice president has to sign it and I have to write, sign off on it?
All our checks are computer generated.
Then the CPA, you know, cause the CPA's charging the city a lick now. I'm telling you, when, when we fired Tracy, the first billing cycle was about $1,000 she's charging the city. And Tracy could've done it by her. That's where I'm getting at, and, you know, when you go back and look, cause I've been checking, you know, and I know it's gonna be, it's gonna take a while to replace both of them. You know, for anybody. You just don't step in a job and do it overnight, and whoever the city ends up firing. But, and we, the city's throwing money left and right. And, and as far as check wise, paying bills, cause I asked her, so I ain't signed no checks yet. I haven't. So I knew the bills hadn't been paid, cause I've got to sign off on it.
No, me and.
I've been signing them. I've been paying ones, like, I paid a bunch of them online, but I have the stack of, they said to keep the receipts and the bills, and I have them stacked up, they're about this high on the desk, and then I have this, the ones that I couldn't pay because they have to be computer generated, checks. I don't have a regular checkbook in there. It's, they're all ones that are printed on the computer.
Well, I think that was another reason that attorney, um, said earlier, talking about the temporary hire. But I have a problem with that, but my question is, Ms. Michelle, is that going to?
If you can, I don't know, are you allowed to handwrite them a check?
Ms. Jordan, I'm sorry, I'm having to, I'm looking at both of y'all. Is there an issue with us writing out of, because I know that some of the money has to come out of certain funds, that's why she was trying to keep up with it for the CPA on the job that he's normally doing for us, not the extra.
All right, I think it would probably create more problems if you get out of that, that system, cause you have, it's not just the, the check itself, you have to flip it to the right sub account. So if it were me personally, I would, I would cross over to handwrite checks unless it was an absolute emergency.
And in the, I know in the beginning of this, it was the mayor's having CPA come in here and do it, and that's why the extra money was there too. Now, I think it's.
He can do the, he can do payroll really quick now.
And so it's, it goes to him, so. And, you know, hopefully we won't have to do it for much longer, they didn't add anything extra to him, but at the moment, she's settled through everything she could and has paid what she could online and has printed the check that she could print. I know that, I mean, Gwen, every, every other Thursday, we've had to come in and sign checks. So I know that everything's, you know, not behind. There's just a few things that are lingering.
Like, they don't have online, there's not, no place to go online and pay them otherwise, I, cause I know what accounts will take them out of. I just don't know the system.
Ms. Michelle, do you have anything else in the clerk's report?
No, ma'am.
Recreation report. Well, I saw you come in.
I don't really have anything to repeat, other than we're starting practice, um, we're in full swing. I just wanted to give y'all opportunity to yell at me, if y'all have anything to yell at me or ask questions about.
I don't feel like yelling.
You can.
Y'all. I, I will say this. Just, I haven't been down there but driving by the sports stadium or anything. It was a lot there. What's going on back here at the track on Saturdays is awesome. The turnout is, is amazing. So I'm, I'm expecting really, really good things this season. And I appreciate you and everybody that's helped.
Did you get your quarter bunnies?
I'm sorry?
Did you get the quarter bunnies?
I did. I just drove back to the track. Um, I do have a little bit of work on the stack field back here, but, um, this last weekend, it was about 26 the first week. We were at 55 the second week, and then we expected the numbers to drop to the spring break, um, and then the weather kind of scared a bunch of people off, so we were back in the twenties this last Saturday. Um, but we did have breaks come out and they set up, handed out waters and hung out with us. And we had a lot more outside, even though we only had 25 kids, back to 20 something kids, um, we had a lot more participation outside, sitting out there watching and being, you know.
I know, I was excited, I'm gonna stop right there. But it, it looks like things are really, really coming together. Does anybody have anything for the rec director? Thank you very much. No yelling. Good time. My pilot works report.
And Jason had, uh, he couldn't be here tonight. Um, I know that he's got loils, one and two are cleaned, and he'll be testing them for the next two days, and he said if Jimmy might have something else to add to that.
We need to find out. We know AT&T has one phone line going out there, but we can't figure out who has the other phone line to get it fixed. I always knew there was two different companies that had the same phone lines going to the same piece of equipment.
Okay, but there's only just a few that it could be.
Nobody can tell us where it is. That's what Jason told me. He's had AT&T check their line, they said it's good. So it has to be her.
Wouldn't it be something that we're paying for?
The only other one that we could be is MediaCom. Or Verizon. Verizon and MediaCom is the only other two that have anything around it.
MediaCom does that phone line.
Do?
Yes.
We'll have to be back to the.
Get, get it checked out. Cause what we done to the wells, I don't know, be any good if we don't get it fixed.
Which one is it?
From the tank to well three, I believe.
I understand.
No, 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 the one going from the tank to well three is good, it's the tank that's well running.
Well running.
We actually had that company that I got from up here, that checked all the equipments, there's nothing wrong with the equipment, they can short it out, like the phone lines you do, and it can play work perfectly. It's been that way for several years.
Anything else?
Not this morning.
Clerk's participation, Ms. Robb Dixon.
Do I have to go to the podium?
Can you talk a little louder?
I'll talk loud. Wait, here's my notes, sorry. Okay, about the cemetery, I had several calls this week, but one, I need guidance from the council on, others I was able to take care of. But someone is, has a family member that's being cremated, and they want to put the cremains in a designated area that their family already has. And they wanted to know what was the charge for that. And I called them, I said, well, right now, it's $300 for every burial. Now, whether or not the council says there's gonna be less for cremains, I don't know. So you guys have to tell me, so I know what to tell people when they call.
Hi, baby, sweet.
Well, most don't case much space, but they were, that particular family wasn't sure if they were gonna put a marker on it.
I, I think I answered that question. It's just a box that big in front of the headstone.
By the size of a headstone? Oh, in front of a headstone.
Right in front of the headstone where the, um, the vault would be, it's about that big, the box that's going in there.
Where is there a headstone going?
Yes, there is a headstone already there. I think I know the family talking about.
Oh, you think you know the family?
Yeah.
For that person or for someone?
It is for the person. The headstone's already been placed, and the remains, the family wants to put the remains where you would put a vault, just in a, a, um, uh, fiberglass type, or, your box. Actually, it's like a small coffin on its, you know, not that, you know.
But you won't be putting another body in that spot?
No, the headstone for that person and the remains are, that's lining up, yeah.
Yeah, it's, they'll still, most people that do cremains will do a headstone, and I don't need to know just for this family, I need to know from now on, you know, what your pleasure is.
The city gonna charge the same thing to bury somebody, to cremate.
They've already, they've already got their headstone there, I mean, so that's already marked and located.
A lot is a lot.
That's what I said, it's still a lot, cause they're not gonna, nobody else can go there, can they? I don't know. This is hard, in fact, and we just say.
Some people will put urns on top of their bus. Some people will put urns on top of other people.
I know in cities, they bury on top of other people, but not here.
We don't allow that, but if they had it, if they had the cremains in an urn and set it on the headstone, then I don't think we should charge anything. That's my recommendation, but if they're actually going in the ground with a headstone, then I think that it should all be the same.
When we discussed this, was it for headstones that were already there too?
No, it's, it's new burial.
New headstones and new.
New burial.
That's all. So we're not charging for anybody who's already got a headstone out there when they're buried? Am I correct on that?
No, no, no.
Then in that situation, we wouldn't need to charge?
No, but if the headstone's already there and the person is not buried, then when they get buried, they owe the fee.
I think, see, I thought we had, there was a difference there.
That's what I understand, so y'all gotta make me understand.
No, if the head, we never said anything about a headstone already. This is something new, but they, this is a new thing. I understand where you're coming from, Ms. Jordan, and we need this.
I thought the assumption was that they already had a headstone out, that, that they had, they had dealt with the prior committee, and so they were, they came in under, whatever. Right.
I thought that too, that's why I asked.
Is this one that was?
Well, I thought they were just making sure that they had a place.
Yeah.
Because, because before, I mean, like, today, I've dealt with the family and, uh, the grandfather that started it, they've got the PVC pipes, that was the previous people that were in charge, that's what they said, to mark your spot. But that's not the same as being buried there. And so anybody that's called and asked me about it, I said, you know, when the body goes in, that's the money, the money is due, and it's $300, and you have to pay it at city hall, and you have to pay it either ahead of time, you can pay it ahead of time and have it taken care of, or it has to be paid when the body goes in.
Well, I know some.
So really, my question is, what about cremains? Is it gonna be a flat fee for everybody, or are you gonna have?
As opposed to a full-size coffin, is that what you're asking?
Right.
Because one hole's not as big as the other?
A lot's a lot, though, I mean, it doesn't matter.
But if there is a space.
That fee is still a lot.
That's what I asked it, yeah.
But if it's a pre-existing that has already got a headstone, there's, you can't charge it.
No, we, at the cemetery where my parents are, they still charge, even if they have a headstone, cause some families, you know, a husband and wife, it's like my mom already had a headstone with my dad, okay, so we still had to pay that fee.
See, times have changed, and, and the city, well, we hired a company, and we still gotta hire them to take care of the cemetery. So we outmaking, trying to make a little bit of money to, to help the cemetery.
Cover the cost.
To cover the cost and different, and the things.
And that's what I tell everybody. I say, you know, it used to be a community thing, now the city owns it, we have to pay for maintenance, and that's how we charge a fee.
Well, my only question is, which way did we decide before, cause that's what I wasn't clear on. I don't remember if we said headstones, we're gonna, if the headstones were already there.
I don't think that was brought up. I just think we said $300.
We just said $300.
I just said, we thought it was only $300.
Nobody else can be buried there.
All right, so you want me to just?
It's a lot, it's a lot. I mean, we're charging $300.
Now, if there's already a family headstone there and somebody gets cremated and they're in an urn, and the urn is just placed there like flowers. If the ground has not been encroached.
Like, if, some people just put an urn inside, okay, say my mom, if I was cremated and my mom has a grave stone, there's room for me to put an urn right by, oh, right by her headstone. I mean, they're not going into the ground, they're just going to place my urn there. That's a different story than when you, cause they're gonna have to dig to put this box in, aren't they?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Let me ask you this. Is that urn taking a, a, a spot?
No, no.
That's the thing.
It's like a flower vase. It's not a truck.
That's, that's a different thing.
That's a different.
But if you're taking a spot, if it's burial or cremation, it's $300. That's the way I see it.
You pay.
It's a lot.
I have to know. I guess y'all have to vote and tell me.
Is that the way you answer it? That's the way you answer it?
Is, do we have to vote on it? I mean, we've already voted on it.
Or if you just all tell me, then I know what to say. But the clerk needs to know too, because when they have to go pay, they have to pay at city hall. Okay, and continuing with the cemetery, we need to go ahead and get straight whatever's gonna happen about putting the fence up and dealing with Herbie and Hatta.
Do we?
We, I mean, we've got to do it. This has been dragging on for several years now.
I guess what we need to do is get the body to the works site. My guy, he's got to come. We got, we got, we gotta go one way or the other.
We have invited him, but he does not come.
If he don't come, the council's got to make it the decision.
Yeah, the council's gotta make the decision if we don't get any help from there.
You know, I explained it to him. I, we walked there and I, I explained it to him, just like Bobby explained to me, you know, and I just, he got mad at me. And I told him, I said, listen, I ain't the one who, I don't care if the council gives the whole 60 feet, I'm just telling you, we got to get it settled. I said, cause the city.
And we all went over there and looked at where the markets were.
Yeah, I said, and I, he, he didn't like where it was, that's why he asked for a survey, and, for Bobby. He, and, for Bobby. And, and that's, when it first started, that's what he told, he said, the city better make sure it's on the line. And that's what I told Bobby. And I said, so, I said, you know.
But Bobby did the survey.
Yeah, we've got the survey.
So we know where the line is.
All right, Joey, did you talk to Herbie, to Peel? No, so Peel hadn't even been talked to. So Peel needs to be talked to. If, but if we don't care about that old alleyway, then we can forget it.
Well, let me explain, and Gary brought it up since we on the issue. He said, good talking about the funeral home. If we, if the city didn't give him the property, or give him part of the property, if we couldn't come to agreement, whatever. It wasn't right for us to fence and not fence the rest of, through the funeral home. But I don't see it like that. Uh, you know, we trying to fence the cemetery, we ain't trying to fence the funeral home. But I understand Gary's point, because the fence, if we continue to fence, there wouldn't be no parking in the funeral home. It goes about five feet right in front of the funeral home. So Gary's wanting to use leverage against the city, you know, to put the leverage on funeral home too, trying to, I think he's trying to buffalo the city, but I don't see-
Joey, let me ask you this. Where the fence is between Hadda's and the funeral home is halfway, the alley, right?
Yeah, but they agreed to it. Now, see, that's why-
They agreed to it, so he's already got some city property that's been basically given to him.
Well, I see. And that's what I explained, that's what I-
Maybe Michelle needs to write a letter, maybe we just need to go the lawyer route and get it done.
Well, that's what I explained, the alleyway, that's the alleyway.
That's the alleyway.
That's alleyway. And the two property, uh, people that owns it, they split it, it's a thirty-foot alleyway. The funeral home took fifteen feet, Gary took fifteen feet. It wasn't nothing to do with the city, but it was the city's alleyway.
It's the city's alleyway, so that's because the city gave it away.
There's ordinances on that, and he's entitled to thirty feet of the cemetery. I said, listen, I don't know nothing about that, but I said, I'll get the clerk or their attorney to look at it. But, uh, see, it's, it's a sixty-foot there, what they are. And, uh, but-
There were alleyways turned over years ago.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that that particular piece of property was ever an alleyway through there.
There's not that ways everywhere, back on the-
You got first, you got to find records where it's a doorway.
Opposite direction.
You got to go back and find your records.
Yeah. Because those, there was alleyways everywhere in the city, so they-
And some of them got turned over, turned over and some of them didn't. But I don't think we're that, I don't think there was one running that way. Where would the ones be?
There's a, it ain't called alleyway, it's called something else.
Should be on old, old plaque, now.
That's-
It was an easement.
The easement runs all the way to the corner of the elementary school, through them woods, it runs. And, uh, Gary's the one that told me. At first, when I asked the city, the previous council, they thought it was just thirty feet. Gary said, no, it's sixty feet. Well, when the highway come in, Anderson Columbia pulled all the, uh, the new markers and all, Bobby pulled off of them. That's why we found out the grave on the other end wouldn't own the city property to start off with. And I told Gary, I said, listen, son, the survey's gonna be right. I said, because he's pulled it off the DOT, new highway and all. I said, you can look at the new surveys and see. And, uh, but I said, your building, if the fence goes where the city's gonna put it, if we can't come to agreement, you ain't going around your building. The fence is gonna be five or six feet from the corner of your building. But I said, the city's not gonna do you like that, I don't think, Gary, but you gonna have to come to agreement. Because the problem is, right now, if somebody gets hurt in them buildings, them canisters you got setting on the city property, the city's gonna get a lawsuit, not you. That's the problem.
I really hate to discuss something like this when that person's not here, but if he's been asked to be here and he's not, then it looks to me like we're gonna either have to set a workshop, or ask our attorney to make some sort of contact with him.
What I'd do is give him one more chance, notify him, let the clerk notify him.
Come to our next workshop.
Workshop just for Gary.
I know he's out of town right now, but he should be back by then.
Our next workshop is February fourth.
Yeah, February fourth.
I mean, April fourth.
April fourth.
Let's send out a request for him to come to a meeting, come to the workshop and see if we can-
Work something out.
And in the meantime, we need to find out what's what, as far as that.
You need to give the, uh, council members a copy of the, if y'all ain't, y'all want still, a copy of the survey. And if y'all don't mind, if y'all want to look, make sure the markers will go back, because two of them been pulled up, which I knew that was-
Well, I went, I went look when they were first announced, when they were-
Yeah, you, if you went out, you knew.
Yeah.
And I went, I knew they was gonna get pulled up.
Yeah, they didn't stay long.
Yeah.
But that's against the law. What it was, I don't know. Isn't that against the law that put the marker?
Okay, so, thank you, so one more thing with the cemetery. Uh, Jason has used the GPR on part of the cemetery, I'm gonna say probably less than a fourth of it. But it's so far, knock on wood, we have found no bodies-
Oh, my goodness.
-that were not marked, so far. And he's going to continue to work on that. And as far as I'm concerned, anybody that wants to be there when he's doing it, to observe it, I mean, I think it'd be cool to look at, but-
I have a question, Ms. Ronald.
You're welcome to do it.
Has he checked the area where the tree was removed?
No, ma'am, we're not, he only did have the area down there. I know, we, we know there's some more that's up there, anyway, okay.
I was just waiting.
All right, so I only ask that he put on the agenda for the cemetery, but I have two more things, please.
No.
Denied.
Go on. One is, and, and this is just me, but it's bothered me, that a lamp post is down by the pizza place, and it has been down for a long time. Is the state responsible for putting that lamp post up? Was they the one that took it down, or is the city? And if you don't want to put it back up, then get it away, it looks like trash. Does anybody know? You know what I'm talking about?
They belong to the city.
They belong to the city, but if the city doesn't-
But then they take it down.
But who took it down?
Probably somebody to run into it.
Because we should have had it put up, and they took it down, and then we're here.
Let's put it, so it'll go back up.
They look nice when they're up, but they don't look nice laying on the ground. Okay. So, can something be done about that? Just a few questions. Okay, and I was hoping that the-
Send a work order to see what, what grant have to be done to get it-
To the pizza place?
Yeah, don't, don't tell him to put it up, to go see what can be done to get it up, or-
I'll look at it, Kim, just tell him, look at it.
I believe that the state, that they're, they are the cities, but that was done during the grant, or here, at some point.
And I was hoping that the fire chief was here, because, but maybe y'all know, as first responders, and I'm assuming that even our volunteer fire people are first responders. Do they have Narcan with them? If anybody knows.
I don't believe so.
I don't think so.
Okay. So the EMT first responders, they do.
They do.
They have that available. Well, there is a company, and it was in the Washington County News this week, if anybody read the Washington County News, it's called I Hope. And they place Narcan stations, uh, around if somebody sponsors them. And it only costs a hundred dollars. Um, I was hoping if our fire department did not have the Narcan available to them, that perhaps the city would-
We had the fire station.
Allocate a hundred dollars for one to be at the fire station. It, it would be put, if they, if you agree to that, it'd be put on a map. They're placing these in Washington and Holmes Counties, at any place that somebody will sponsor one, that, that anybody can go to if, if you know someone's overdosing. So it could, it could save a life, but it would have to not be inside the fire station, it would have to be outside, so it was accessible to other people. So I don't know, I've gotten the article. If you guys would agree for it to be put somewhere in a public space, and you didn't think it was a liability of any kind, then I would pay the hundred dollars. If it could save one life, we, we lost at least twelve people in Washington County last year from overdoses.
Well, the only thing, at the fire station, it might be a liability, because it's so-
Sure, you are.
You know, I'm right, so.
There's, there's always gonna be liability? No, no, it's a lot. I don't, I don't know too much about the Narcan stations. I mean, I, I, I'm happy to look into it, see if there's been any-
Is it something that has to be manned?
No, 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 it's free, it's a freestanding thing, with directions in it and whatever. I should have come over and gotten copies made, I apologize.
I saw that.
I'm entertaining company at home.
I think we need to look into it.
Yeah, you can do that at a workshop or something. I, I wanted to talk to the fire chief, and he's-
I would go with the fire chief, honestly, the, the fire station, placement at the fire station doesn't really give me any heartburn. Um, that's somewhere you would expect to find, emergency.
And people could find it in a hurry.
But I'll look into it.
Okay, thank you, Michelle.
Ms. Ronald, do you have anything else?
No, praise the Lord.
Mr. Gary, I apologize, she was on the actual agenda, and I see you here on public participation.
That's fine.
That's how come she got called before you.
He's a gentleman.
I'll try to be this time. The other thing, they've got two things. Y'all be very careful on this next clerk you hire. Please don't hire nobody else. It's sue, it's sue happy, because I can tell you what's gonna happen, you gonna get sued. The other thing, my neigh, my nephew, he was in mama's house, had a buyer. Buyer rides around the neighborhood, said, we, we want the house, but said, we will not bring our children up in this neighborhood. They rode around in bus barn, rode down that road, so, so y'all got to do something. This affecting my property value, this from everybody's property value. Now, I, if the county's not helping, I'll go to the county meeting. If I need to start bringing thirty, forty people up here, don't matter to me. We need to do something about this garbage. But it is also a health issue, some places. You got rats living in some of these places, you got abandoned houses. It's up to y'all. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Gary. Mr. Chris Smith?
Yeah, just have one, uh, question. Uh, we're getting pretty close to having the food bank in operation. And, um, the question that we have is, in the event we need to access after hours, weekends, or holidays, due to a delivery, or maybe a family that needs food. How do we go about, what is procedure? Do we call somebody, can we have a key, what, how, how do we go about that?
I thought that Ms., we had already made that available to Ms.-
I have a key, but you guys have a code.
I can't add any codes to the-
Code is pull at this time, as I understand it, so that's one of the-
But you can call me, um, me or Jimmy, uh, Garner, we can actually do it from our phones.
Yeah. Are you gonna be here?
But you're gonna be-
I don't have to be here at the building, uh, uh-
Are you gonna be here? But are you gonna stay?
Oh, no, well, whoever gets my phone can do it from the phone, no, it's on, I, well, I'll take my code out, but there's been, I don't think about that.
Okay.
So there'll be a number that we can call a person, and then they can open up-
Right, well, Jimmy Gardner will be around, you can call him, and he can deactivate, he's hard to get up with most of the time, but-
Okay.
Yeah, there's an, there's an app that she uses.
There's an app on the phones, so it's gonna stay on the phone, the app is.
Okay.
And whoever gets the clerk's phone will have the app too, they'll just have to change the code, because the codes are, are last four.
Okay, all right, as long as we, you know, there's a process, a procedure so forth.
Will y'all let Tim know that Ms. Mary or me would be calling, or?
I'll let him know, yeah.
Yeah, he's already left. Do you have anything else, Mr. Smith?
Uh, no, that's it.
Thank you. No, old business, new business, number one, motion to approve adjustment, account number eleven eighty-one for a misread meter, for a hundred forty-two dollars and seventy-nine cents, do I have a motion to approve? Second? Discussion. All in favor? Uh, motion carried. Motion to approve job opening description for deputy clerk ad, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
That's second. Discussion. I'd like to see this approved, and let's go ahead and approve to advertise it, but I'd, I'd like to see the ad a little bit more like the one that was put out for the clerk's position. Um, have y'all looked at this?
Yeah.
So I'd like to see it approved, but maybe just do some-
You'll have to tell me what you want added to it, because I can basically, I'm trying to- You just did a basic.
Yeah. So, are we all in favor for approving an advertisement with a little adjustment?
We have.
And get, and going forward with advertising with that, so, all in favor?
Somebody asked what you do about that-
Motion carried.
Michelle.
Motion to approve sixty-
What did they do about that anti-Semitic sign? Right, he has to take it down, right?
Excuse me?
The anti-Semitic sign out there in that yard, doesn't he have to take that down? That's against the law, isn't it?
You tread on the First Amendment, you start talking that way.
Yep.
I agree with you a hundred percent, but First Amendment-
But that's their right, isn't it?
But if you had an ordinance to keep the yards clean, you'd have to clean this yard.
Yeah. Don't go there, go and make me clean mine.
Oh, yours is beautiful.
Number three, motion to approve sixty hours and twenty. Excuse me, sixty point two five hours of verified leave papers of deputy clerk.
I'll make motion to approve that.
Second. Discussion. All in favor? Uh, motion carried. Number four, do I have a motion to approve the driveway, a driveway to be placed at thirty oh two Main Street, or access-
Thirty-three eighteen.
Thirty-three eighteen.
And I wrote that down, plot.
Here it is.
Worded in this letter, thirty-three eighteen
To access-
For the access of thirty oh two Main Street, for the family dog tree.
Thirty oh two.
So does that mean that gray house is gonna be removed?
Hold on just a minute.
Because that has to be what that address is. No, they moved the house on the main street.
Thirty-three eighteen Court Avenue.
Yeah, a motion for thirty-three eighteen Court Avenue, to put a driveway in that's gonna be accessed at thirty oh two Main Street by the family dog tree. That's-
Right now, there's a house there.
Right now, there's a house there.
Yes.
Where? Right next to Mrs. Paul.
At thirty-three eighteen.
And they moving that out?
No.
No, they moved the house beside my brother, not behind him.
Oh, there's a house, oh, that's right, mister, what's his name?
I forgot.
Didn't he, you should be over there?
John Nichols, you said.
Yeah, Nichols.
That was thirty oh two was the house that he moved.
Yeah, I know they approved one of them.
So, and we're all clear, it's for thirty-three eighteen Court Avenue. Do I have a motion in a second?
I make a motion, we'll approve. I make a motion, we'll approve.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion carried. Number five, an emergency temporary hire. Ms. Jordan.
So y'all have to make a decision, um, pretty quickly, because your deputy clerk last day was Wednesday. And I've reached out to every contact that I have personally, all my municipal lawyer friends, to find out if they have any retired clerks, to know anyone who had served in a clerk's chassis before, that Bobby wanted to step in on emergency spaces, and reached out, no one. Um, so, one of your applicants, um, has worked for the city before, um, so that would be my recommendation that you consider a temporary, a temporary emergency hire, um, as the interim clerk. You can continue to accept applications, um, scheduled timely interviews.
And also, at the same time, we're fixing to advertise for our deputy clerk, so we would have, if we do that, then we would have, be able to interview clerks and deputy clerks.
Right.
Kind of like we set up, I know before, we had to do a deputy clerk and then an outside employee, I think, we set up for both sets, to do interviews, and then turn out.
I have a question, so this temporary hire is qualified to just step in and do the job? Or do we need to ask Michelle to extend herself for a few days?
Well, that's what I was going to ask Michelle.
And I don't know if the council agreed. You don't, do you mind extending your leave until we find somebody?
I don't mind training somebody, but I would like to advertise, I, I, I'll, I'll stay until I can get somebody to the basics to at least be able to do billing.
Well, y'all, you're already in a position, and, uh, I'm just asking as a council member.
Right.
Do you mind helping the city out until, you know?
I don't mind helping the people of the city out now.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, Michelle, I do. But we got to have somebody up here, and I'd rather have, instead of bringing somebody back that was up to the previous as the deputy clerk.
Things have changed a lot.
You know, we all, yeah, things have changed, and you already in a position, and I know that a lot of the things that's been put on you, there's nothing you can do. You know, you don't, you ain't, you weren't trained to, you know, to handle the check situation also.
Can I ask another question about that? If the CPA, CPA, is that what it's called? If, if he knows how to do those checks, can he train her to do it?
He, he's already expressed that he's not the clerk, he's working, working really hard to do.
But if he's gonna write these, I mean, if he can do those checks, can't he show her while he's doing it, so that maybe she can?
I guess that he could, yeah.
Garrett could, he, he'd probably be willing to show me.
But here's my, here's my.
Those problems, I get interrupted every time.
For my liability standpoint for the city. Um, we've got a resignation, the last day is the twenty-third. If we extend that until whenever, then, then what? Then we hire somebody, then we have to remove her, or we say, okay, you leave?
No, I, I, if I'm, I'm willing to stay until I train somebody that can do at least the billing part of the job, I mean, that's the most important part at this time, is the billing, is the CPA can do his checks. I'm just doing it for the city, because citizens have asked me, please don't leave right now, don't, please don't leave us, and nobody likes, right? I have been asked by a lot, almost everybody that's come into building in the past couple of weeks. I would do it for the citizens, because they appreciate. I mean, I mean, I know that Ms. Gwynn has asked me not to go, and Ms. Brock has asked me if I would be willing to stay.
And I, I don't understand.
Yeah, because I actually stay, because we don't have to.
Yeah, we need somebody, you know, that's been here, um, until, you know, we got clerk and deputy clerk position up for advertising, you know, we looking at, you know?
It shouldn't be more than thirty, thirty days.
Yeah, we looking at a month, or get either position filled, you know, so.
That's also that two years and four.
Yeah, so.
I think it leaves you sort of in a gray area. Because right now, you have a, a set termination date, um, I mean, I said termination is on fire, that means that the employment relationship is terminated. Um, but if you extend that, I, I would rather see it on a contractual basis. Um, you want a defined end date. With this, it I, I wouldn't recommend that you keep someone on after they've already said, I'm leaving, that's, you're already in, in sort of a you have greater liability in that timeframe anyway, that's why a lot of jobs, when you turn your, when you turn in your notice, that's your last stage at the job. There are a lot of reasons why you, you want to go ahead and separate that relationship when an employee's giving you notice that you're leaving.
So what do you stand back, Contra? You couldn't do a temporary thirty-day extension?
Well, you, you could, that's why I'm saying, I, I would, would like to see the employment relationship defined, so that you don't run the risk of you keep the employee on another two, three weeks, and then, um, you know, you put yourself at risk now for an unemployment claim, or another problem that you have to deal with in the future, and it just, it's generally better when an employee gives you notice to go ahead and end that employment relationship.
And what is the risk to the city? That you're talking about?
I'm sorry?
What is that risk you mentioned to the city?
Uh, it would be definitely an unemployment claim, potentially some sort of.
You could have unemployment claim anyways. If I, I mean, I can, anybody can apply for unemployment, whether they quit or retire, it doesn't matter.
Your temporary hire is, according to your personnel rules, your temporary hires are, um, not on a probationary period, you can terminate them at any point in time. It, it is different, under your policy, it's different to be a hire on a temporary basis versus continuing an ongoing regular employment relationship. It's totally up to you all, but that, this is a hundred percent a business decision, um, for the city.
We have, um, several four, I think, applications in our packet, and then another one, one of us. Yep, five, that was, well, there was one here, that I didn't get, in the packet. And of those, um, one of them has actually worked for the city before in both capacities. If we wanted to go over route of a temporary hire and that person was willing which according to paperwork, she is. And she could come in, it counts as agreeable to it. Twenty-first right there. March twenty-first.
I would like to see you go ahead with the temporary hire and do a thirty-day extension for Michelle.
Yeah.
That way, that gives her another end time, y'all, y'all another end time for her. And even if somebody's worked before, things change, so she can be retraining.
Not gonna be the same.
Two thousand and fourteen, a lot has changed.
Sure it has, yeah, so.
Forest D and Banning are totally different systems.
It's up to y'all, though, I'm not a councilman.
I'm offering it, because they obviously asked by the president.
I think, I appreciate you offering it out of the goodness of your heart.
It doesn't really matter to me one way or another, I'm trying to help out the city, that's the only reason, when they ask me about it, I, it's up to the council. It doesn't matter to me.
No, because when she was on vacation and Tracy was gone, you guys shut this place down. You can't do that for two weeks, three weeks.
We hope. I think y'all better take a vote.
Close the will of council.
We need to check on this place. They can start with the twenty-first.
That one?
Mm-hmm.
She's right there. Ms. White?
Maybe, maybe she can come in for the next three days. And Michelle, Michelle can hit.
She's currently employed, though.
I'm just. What, you gotta give a question?
Okay, instead of talking about her.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'll sit right here, if you have a question, or if you have comments.
Your application here says that you're able to start on the twenty-first, my question is, is that true?
It is very true, I can start right now.
You have worked as the deputy clerk.
Yes, I have, and I've worked as a deputy clerk.
Bill in.
Yeah, billing, everything, checks, everything. I also understand, you know, the hesitation on some of these people here. Even though I did leave in good standing, I thought, I gave my two weeks' notice.
I kinda like Chad's idea, let's, let's bring her in and let, uh, my opinion is, let Ms. Michelle leave on her end date. It's a temporary position, we've got other applications and, that we can interview for the permanent position, and we, we're fixing to advertise for a deputy clerk.
But this is the same, three days is not enough time.
It's actually two.
Two days is not enough time, I mean, we're gonna leave the city open, y'all better think about it, I'm telling you, I mean, come on. I mean, to me, we need somebody in here that already knows the system now, and she needs to be trained, don't you need to be trained? And you can't walk right into this. Oh, no, ma'am, no, ma'am, you are absolutely correct, you are correct about that.
Well, if you say thirty days is two, two weeks or something, some training's got to be done by somebody.
My question to our attorney is, if we set a timeframe, what kind of liability does that put us in?
Well, you want to do a contract, just like your rec folks are on a contract. So her regular employment would need to terminate as of the date that she gave her notice. And then you would put her on a contract.
For like thirty days, or however.
Or whatever.
Yeah, however long. And she would be under a contract, she will not be actually a city employee, not will. Is that what you're saying?
No, she would still be a city employee, it's just that, that, generally, in Florida, you work at will, right? So, um, we would, would change that, so that whatever date that you want her to work through is defined in your contract, and on that date, that's the end of her employment. There's no unemployment claim.
You also run into a situation that the lady does, whoever you bring doesn't work out.
I can't hear you, Garrett.
We still got to stay.
The what now? I didn't hear you.
Thank you.
Can't you, can't you word it where she's, she leaves when, I mean, why do y'all put her on a contract? Can't she withdraw her resignation and extend it?
I would not recommend that. But you've already, you've already accepted her resignation, let me restate that, you've accepted her resignation, you're allowing her to work out her notice period, you've accepted her resignation. That, that, her request to terminate her employment as of Wednesday has been accepted by the council. So even if she rescinded it, her employment would terminate. Because you've already.
So, so your recommendation is, if we keep Michelle for thirty days, thirty-five days, is put her on a contract?
Yes.
And say, when this such and such date's up, when we, when the city fills the deputy clerk or the clerk's position, bill time's up.
Right, I mean, my recommendation is that you don't, you don't continue her employment, but if you're going to continue her employment, then you put her on a contract. I'm sorry, it's really difficult.
To give.
The director.
I don't, it don't bother me none, I mean.
I don't know that everybody even heard that, so you're kind of being talked over. So, you, what is your recommendation?
I mean, my recommendation, advising you as an employer, is when an employee has given you their notice, you accept their notice and you terminate that employment relationship. But if you want to continue that, then my recommendation is that you put her on a contract, and you very clearly define the terms of her ongoing employment relationship with the city.
You can write that contract up?
We already have one for your rec folks, they're, they're on a contract.
I do not, I agree with the attorney on this one, I think that her, her last day should be the date that she stated, but, um, I'm, I'm one person here, so whatever. I need a motion to whatever it is that y'all will, we call for.
We can't, we can't put Ms. White in a position where she can't do her job.
This is what I'm saying, I mean, why put her out there?
If she's going to be hired, then you don't want to set her up for failure.
That's right.
After all, I haven't said anybody.
And I, and I, and I see where you're coming from, and I see where Michelle's coming from, and, um, Ms. Jordan. But.
We gotta look, well, we have to look at the citizen, what's going on with burning? I mean, me, me or somebody?
You thinking fifteen, fifteen to thirty days?
I'm looking at what the city of Verdun.
Kitchen?
Oh, yes, sir, it, quicker than that.
Ten days?
As long as, uh, the person that's gonna be training me knows what they're doing, I'll know what I'm doing.
So, so in fifteen days, we gonna be studied up on all the grants, all, I mean, there's a lot goes on up there.
Yes, sir, they did.
Yeah, but that's not happening right now, that's not really.
It's going on, ma'am, so, I mean, and the CPA can help her a lot, whenever.
And he can help you a lot.
Yes. That's what, that's what.
A hundred dollars an hour.
That's a lot of money.
A hundred dollars an hour is real cheap, if she can do the job.
You're, you're, you're.
I wouldn't have applied if I didn't think I could.
Your software has its own training, right? So there, there's that also, it, the program itself offers its own training. So anybody that comes into this job will have.
Is gonna have to learn the software.
And, and it's.
One way or another, they're gonna need it.
They're the first.
Always in the software.
You got billing in, and you're billing in five days.
No matter where you go.
Yeah, shut up. Something else we need to keep in mind, we're talking about temporary hires here, we, we're still gonna have to come up with a permanent in both positions.
And there's, there are no manuals. I've gone through the office, there's, there's no manual, there are no training manuals, there are no job duty manuals, you know, there, there's really not, um. So anybody that comes into either job is coming in without any real structure for how to do the job, which is why my recommendation was, find someone who's been in that office before, who at least knows the general duties of the clerk or the deputy clerk. Because right now, you're just gonna be, like, your interim person is just going to be training water, because you ideally, your interim person isn't going to be your long-term hire, but we're not in ideal circumstances right now. But you're just, you're it's rough.
It's rough, yeah.
So, anybody that you put into this job is going to struggle. It doesn't matter how qualified they are, anybody that you put into this job is gonna struggle, because there, there is no guidebook for them.
Actually, there's a manual to run to. But it, it's not gonna help with the, the little other things, like, we got billing in, meter reads go out in about, in, in two days. I'm just letting you know, meter reads go out in two days, okay, then you have, um, shut offs are supposed to be in the morning. So those are two things, y'all, I mean, unless you don't want me to, don't want to shut off, I have, um, eight people that have not paid the bill this month. Um, it's, like I said, I was offering because people like Rhonda and, and Gary, Lori had asked me, and that's the only reason I was offering. It doesn't matter to me one way or another, what y'all do, I was trying to be helpful, and I, and I expressed that before, that I was, I don't have a problem training.
I appreciate that, it's just, you know, when you.
If you don't want to do it, that's.
Your resignation was on the twenty-third, you knew all those things were coming up too, when you resigned.
That it does it.
So what is, what is the will of council, what do you guys want to do?
Well, I want to go with the contract, because we just gotta have somebody right now. There's only, I think, we just got to do something, I mean, we're stuck. And I mean, we're just, yes, no, I never been in a situation like this before. That's my clear, that's me, she's talking for me. And you're free, you mess you know.
What you gonna get me? I'm gonna mess win, I'd extend Michelle's contract, I'll do it.
And it's not an extension, we're gonna have to do a contract with her.
Yeah.
How many days?
How many days? She's, she's thinking less than fifteen days that she can have it.
Can you, you said less than fifteen, Michelle?
That's not, that's not how fast she learns.
Oh, we got, but sir, okay. That's why I said, yeah, it's, it depends on who is doing the training on how fast I can learn it, and if it's a, what, a different type of program. It shouldn't be that long, I don't think it's.
Excuse me.
I think thirty.
Excuse me, I'm not, I'm not a city resident, but can I speak about one thing? Please?
No, come on.
No, it's nothing. She left the city of Verdun because of me, because I own the business called Fricky Nickel. And she came in to my business that had no book, that had no explanations of things, and transformed our business and kept it alive for six years through Hurricane Michael. She learned software that she didn't know. So I'm speaking on her behalf to tell you, I say, I understand your problem, and she may not be a permanent solution, or she could be, but she will learn, and she will learn fast. She's very qualified in office procedures. So I'm speaking for her only because I saw it for myself firsthand. And I don't know if there's people that don't like her for whatever reason, Karen and I have been together for eight years, and she is not she is a better person now than when you last saw her, if that means anything. So I think she's offering a great thing, and I, you know, for the lady to stay and help her, that would be nice for y'all, but it would be good to see y'all have a, you know, a clean path to transformation, you know, I, I'd like to see that for y'all, and that's all I wanted to say was, I know she's qualified.
Karen, I want to clarify something also, when you applied for the job, you were applying for either all or.
Yes, ma'am, I, because I knew she had put in her resignation, and knew Tracy's job was, you know, she had been, you know, terminated. So I knew y'all were gonna need a, a city clerk and a deputy clerk. I wasn't applying strictly for city clerk, but when I brought my application in here, I had city clerk slash deputy clerk, the, uh, acting city clerk informed me, I could not do that, so I had to redo my application.
I didn't think you could apply for a job that wasn't open yet.
It was open.
It went advertised, it went advertised.
You had renewed the resignation, so.
I for jobs that's not advertised and, um, no.
Well, that's nothing to argue about.
No, I, I was just saying, I just.
My, yeah, my point is.
Places I applied before.
Uh, my point is, I wasn't specifically looking for the city clerk position. I would be content with the deputy clerk because, as y'all know, y'all were here with me before. That's what I mainly did. I only did city clerk for a little bit before Keith got hired. So, I mean, my, my point here was when I applied was to, I'll take deputy clerk, but at the same time, I'll do whatever you need me to do until you get, you know what I'm saying? I'm wanting to help. Is, is what I'm doing. That's why I applied. Cause I know y'all need.
Sometime during y'all's reign.
I, I remember.
She was here.
She was, Miss Win.
I can't hear you.
Her hair is.
You remember me?
Yes, ma'am, I sure do.
Didn't you take your hair?
Yeah.
I did.
She was here during the time that.
I topped it off, I topped it off and turned it.
And so she stepped up and worked in both positions until.
Until Keith was hired.
Diane's position was. Yeah, Keith we brought in. And then she left afterwards. Am I correct on that?
I left after Keith was hired, um, when he took over the Frickin' Nickel.
Because of me.
Because of him, to run his.
Everything always just.
It is. You know, we ended up owning the business, so that's why I went, was to make that happen.
And we had to shut the business down. Coming with Godus.
Hurricane Godus.
The point that I was trying to make was, was that, cause here, here's something else that we need to think about. If y'all want to leave her on contract for thirty days or forty-five or whatever, she's being paid the clerk's salary. Topped out. Or what our budget's got. So we need to keep that in mind. And we do need to temporarily hire somebody in here. But under the circumstances, if we go the route that y'all want to go, then we're gonna be paying her eighteen dollars an hour, and then we're gonna be paying the deputy clerks. So as long as y'all clear on that. And there's gonna have to be some sort of paperwork drawn up by our attorney. So that it doesn't come back about us in the bud. I guess is the plainest way I could, if that's the route that y'all want to go.
Yeah, but we're only gonna pay her as a deputy clerk. Is that what we're saying?
That's what I'm telling you, you're gonna have to do if this is.
That's what I'm saying. We're gonna.
I would have a contract.
I would accept that, yeah.
Yes, I would accept that.
Well, but she's temporary hire. And if you, you don't have to pay her temporary hire as much as you were paying her as a matter of fact.
That, that's not, Miss Win, you completely missed what I was saying. Uh, uh, what I was saying was, if y'all decide to go with this and do a contract with her, and she's already got her, you know, she's resigned and got her date that she's leaving, we're paying her the eighteen dollars an hour for the clerk's position. Cause she's interim clerk. And so we're gonna hire somebody else on. We're gonna be paying them too. So all that's gonna have to be worked out. And a contract, if I'm correct, Ms. Jordan, you're saying that we're gonna have to do an actual, some sort of contract with her in order to cover the city on this?
Yes.
What, Rick, contract?
My concern is that, just in what I've seen in the last couple of weeks, I don't think that you're gonna get much benefit out of this, um, training period. The deputy clerk wasn't adequately cross-trained to step into the clerk position.
I think they were everything but AP. In the grants.
I mean, I, I had to, I had to come down and, and.
And that was when it first started and I was overwhelmed.
How to number the ordinance. How to go to the ordinance book and find the last ordinance that was adopted.
And I found the other one that went in the book.
And you make a little bit more than a hundred dollars an hour with CPA.
All right, I'm gonna be a black sheep, I reckon. I'm gonna say, Michelle goes on, on Wednesday, you come on as hired as in tomorrow morning. You gotta do a background check. And.
Yeah.
Have a good day.
Yeah, like, we have to do a background check on the different.
This is an emergency.
I feel like I can pass it. I've got, I have a solicitor's theory format. I mean, I'm not worried about that.
Who's responsible? I mean, is, if I'm training somebody with no background check, uh, who's responsible?
Really?
I mean, ma'am, I, I'm just being honest.
Yeah.
We didn't go background check on you before you were hired, that I recall.
I know.
I don't.
No.
I do know, I do know that, um, I found the ordinance book. It just wasn't where it belongs.
Did I know it?
I want your motion so I can put it out.
Good luck. I got company.
So make a motion that we hire her immediately as a temporary.
Okay, so the motion is to hire Ms. Karen White on an emergency temporary basis as interim clerk beginning.
You can't do it.
You need to start rate of pay to start date.
Ma'am.
You need to start, start date of rate of pay.
Start date of March twenty-second.
Which, you say we can hire her for tomorrow? We can.
At the same rate of pay.
We can, we can hire her for tomorrow.
And then that'll give her an opportunity to turn over codes and all, all that stuff. They'll be working it out.
Okay, codes are your last four, your social security numbers, codes will have to be entered into the system.
Well, we, we'd already discussed, Ms. Michelle.
Yeah, I understand that. I, I, I understand that. I'm not, I just wanna, I'm not gonna give her my last.
No.
Four of my sources.
I'm not asking you.
My code, okay.
But that, what I'm saying is that'd get, that would give opportunity to change over contact.
You said the rate of pay, what, at the eighteen dollars an hour?
She have Tracy's phone. It's still.
Yeah, but Tracy's phone, I, I, it's got her last four in it still, so.
But the, the clerk is expected to maintain that information.
Right. Yeah, she didn't have Tracy's phone, but that's not a problem. But the code that's in Tracy's phone for the app is Tracy's last four.
I know. Not temporary.
If, if he's doing, the interim clerk.
He or she is doing the interim clerk.
Yeah, but when you do temporary hire, you don't have, well, y'all do it, but you don't. Temporary hire is not, you do not have to pay them.
But we, we've got it going on now. We need.
Yeah, but she was already here and we made her that.
It's interim.
Coming in from, coming in from outside. I don't mind you making it. Believe me, Karen, I don't. But I'm just saying, I know that we don't have to pay a temporary hire coming in the same as we pay a regular employee. We, you know, we just don't.
Okay, so.
Would you be, would it be okay to hire deputy clerk?
Yeah, if you want to do that. Because you could do that and start her off with that. And then if we hire her, then she moves up. But you don't bring people in and, and do that.
Miss Win, my point was, and I, I, I'm really not trying to argue, is that we've got one coming in that's doing the same thing. That we moved Ms. Michelle up to a position that she didn't know anything about, admittedly.
Yeah, but she was.
She's interim clerk. I don't have a problem with doing it as deputy clerk, as long as everybody's agreeable to it. And if she's agreeable, what is the deputy clerk's pay right now?
Thirteen.
Fourteen?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Are you agreeable to that?
If I'm gonna be an interim or an emergency hire deputy clerk, thirteen. If I'm gonna be more or less her, if she's gonna stay in the city clerk position, then.
Until she leaves.
Until she leaves, right.
You know, that's.
If I'm gonna be designated as a deputy clerk.
His motion was for her to come in on the twenty-second and her to leave on the twenty-third, so that's.
Well, I thought she was coming, when's the twenty-second?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. I just, I just want to make sure we're doing this right and legally, and that's why I keep asking our attorney. And I'm asking about this motion, so before I call for it, everybody knows what's what. And it, and is agreeable or not agreeable. So what is your motion?
Make a motion.
I'm asking you so I can write it down and then I'll, and you've made it. I just need to write it down. Motion to hire Karen. In which position?
The deputy clerk.
Deputy clerk.
Emergency?
Emergency deputy clerk.
I'm sorry, ma'am?
I'm just covering your. I couldn't bone him down.
Okay, is it gonna stay that way when Michelle leaves on the twenty-third?
Slash clerk.
The main issue, do we hire?
Well, until the hiring process, because we might, we might, well, I'm just losing this count. We might hire her for, we might see somebody else.
And that's fine. I'm just asking.
You know, so we just leave her at deputy clerk and we hire.
And you're okay with de, doing the deputy clerk and the clerk's work?
I didn't pay for thirteen.
Well, that's what it's looking like here, but she.
Well, I know y'all were giving a contract with her.
That's not what this motion is for. This motion is for her to take her day that's set and you to start.
I start tomorrow and she, I work with her tomorrow and Wednesday. And then she's gone on Wednesday?
Yes. That's what this motion is. Well, yeah, because she just went, the thing she thought she's gonna be, be paid to do both like she is.
No, she didn't think that. She thought she was gonna be here longer to train her. Is that what you thought?
I thought, I thought y'all had to settle on, giving her a contract after she, after her.
That was discussed, but the, the motion that's on the floor is not that.
Is not. Okay, okay, I.
So they're asking you, would you come on as deputy clerk if you stays deputy clerk, that's if your clerk's salary, if they hire you.
Yet they don't.
Right. They're, they're doing.
They're not. Thanksgiving. Okay, I love. If she is leaving, if she is actually out the door on Wednesday, and she is not gonna be here ever number four assistance then, I think, and y'all are gonna want me to step in the city clerk until you find one or that whatever. I, I think thirteen would be, but I don't expect eighteen. I'm not, I mean.
They could do it anyhow.
To be honest with you, eighteen I think would be too much. Just coming in.
Once, once she does, when it, Wednesday does come or Thursday, then we might bump her up to.
I would say, I would, I would, I would say fifteen.
She's gonna be interim clerk, she would have to be interim clerk once Michelle leaves because she'd have to sign for the clerk stuff. But we don't have to pay her eighteen.
No.
No, that's how the advertisement left it.
Yeah, we left it at.
The pay to be determined based on experience, because you may have, you know, a more qualified or experienced candidate, you know, that, that might command a higher dollar per year. It, it really needed to be negotiated.
So what about fourteen?
I would, fourteen or fifteen, I would go with that.
Would that be agreeable, counsel? Until we can get, um, the deputy clerk's position advertised, we can set up interviews, maybe we get some, some more of both. And she'll be in a position until then? She says she didn't have a problem doing the deputy clerk's job for, that's what she originally applied for. Or was trying to apply for.
And for certain, you'll be able to work all next week?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Cause it, that's your qualifying period. That, that's.
Yeah, that's, that's another thing. We have.
Elections.
Election qualifying.
She's doing election.
Yeah, I've done it.
So you've done that, you've done it during, you worked during election time before, qualifying paperwork, so you know.
What you think, Julie?
Did you get a second?
I think I'm still trying to read it because it changed twenty-three times. Um, I was trying to get, I was saying, would y'all, would y'all be good with fourteen?
Chad, why don't you just state a number and then you need a second for discussion and then.
Mm-hmm, this is number eight. I think she's talking about pay. State your pay rate. Cause the motion is there to hire Karen in the emergency deputy clerk position. I need a rate of and a date of hire.
For fourteen dollars. The date of hire for twenty-six.
Do I have a second?
I second that discussion.
Discussion?
I still don't understand why we are going this route. Because I just don't, I'm not satisfied with this. I know she has the experience, but things have changed over here. Come on, y'all leaving the city wide open as far as I'm concerned.
You did hear our attorney say that she had to come down here to help find an ordinance.
I know that.
I did too. I've had to.
I know that.
You both came on that day and it was, it was right after the transition took place. I mean.
I had to, I had to reroute the advertisement for the city clerk's position. Um, and pretty much saw it. It's gonna have to do the same for this one. I think what, what I'm, here's my personal opinion on it. There was a resignation for a reason. There was a date given for a reason. I have an issue with going back on that because I believe that it's gonna turn around and bite the city and the citizens.
No, ma'am, I was trying to be helpful.
I appreciate you being.
I understand that.
This is my opinion, and I'm one council member, but I, I, I can give my opinion too. I do not think that it's going to help the city at all. I think that we should hire somebody on a temporary emergency basis until we can get some clerks and deputy clerks' applications and sit down and go through them and interview people and get two people in here that are set, that are ready to work, ready to stay, and let's move forward. That's my personal opinion of everything that's went on the plate. It's time that we move forward. And it's gonna take one day at a time. And that, that's all there is to it. We either move forward or we sit here and it all falls in on us. Does anybody else have any discussion?
I just don't wanna see the city left open. I don't want to see nothing. I mean, I've worked in, I've worked where, I don't care where you go. The systems are all different. They are different. You know that. If you go in there, you might know everything about computers. You might know everything about all the different apps. Walk in the door, it's all different.
A new job is a new job.
It's all different. And that's why I said, even those two days, even if you went a week, it would be better. Two weeks would be better than just like that to me. And that's just me. I'm just one vote.
My, my day, me saying that it stays the way it was done is because of what the attorney advised on the situation was.
I heard what she said, but then she said we could do a contract. Did she say that?
She said it wasn't.
She said she didn't recommend it. She would do what we wanted to do.
I'm just looking out for the city. I want things to go right for the city.
But between the lawyer and the CPA that we have hired, we should be okay. I really believe we'll be okay.
I wouldn't give these people around.
I will hear it anyway.
You got, I've been hearing.
I know how they are, and I'm gonna tell you right now, we're gonna hear.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Uh.
No.
No.
Okay, back to the drawing board. What do you want to do?
I want to hire her temporarily. I do. Now, I didn't tell you to go.
Oh.
I thought y'all just voted on that.
No.
No, it, we're, we're.
We're discussing this. It has nothing to do with y'all.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
You are here regardless. That's not anything to do with it. It's the contract.
I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
Okay, one more time. Just so, I, I, I don't mind getting all the barks in my way. I'm fine with that. One more time, Ms. Jordan, would you please explain what you said during this meeting? And what the recommendations are? And the reasons for why you have those recommendations? Cause I'm hearing it down here while all the other talking is going on.
Well, and I, I think they, they heard what, what I said, you know, which is generally when an employee gives you their notice, you accept their notice and you either let them work out that notice period or you relieve them of their duties, you know, immediately. That it's, it's totally your discretion. Um, my recommendation would be that if you have an employee that has given their notice, said this is when I want to depart from my employment, um, that you stick with that. But if you don't wanna stick with that, then the next thing that we can look at is putting that employee under a contractual relationship. So we still have a. So we still have a dedicated, specific end date to the employment relationship. So generally, when an employee leaves our employment, um, there's a defined end. We don't want to get back into a gray area of what's this person's status, um, what's their, you know, what's the end goal year? We don't want to... I don't think that's the word that's right. We have a defined exit plan right now. We don't want to take a step back and put ourselves back into a more gray area. Lawyers like black and white. We like firm deadlines, end dates, written agreements. Those are things that lawyers like. But I'm not... I'm a lawyer. I don't run the city. I don't have to answer to constituents, you know? So if you want my recommendation, it's let her work out her resignation period as she's given you. Make an emergency hire of someone who's been in the job before. You're gonna be treading water, no matter what you do. That's what you've been doing. And honestly, y'all don't realize it, that you've been treading water for a long time.
Who you are.
The city clerk's office was, um, it was really, really surprising when I went in there and started looking for records, trying to help your interim clerk. I don't think that y'all realize how disorganized your office was already. So just as an outsider coming in, you've been treading water for a long time. So I completely understand where y'all are coming from, and why you would want or need to have employees continue on in their working relationship. My advice is always gonna be to take the most risk averse option, but that's not always the best option for your business.
I'm gonna retract the motion. Make a motion. Go with what the attorney said.
So... Are we making the motion that we just voted on?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion, and we have a second to hire Ms. Karen as an emergency deputy clerk, who's gonna fill in at the rate of fourteen dollars an hour?
Yes.
And then her date is... Starting date is March twenty-second. All in favor? Uh? Opposed? Motion carried. Congratulations. Good luck to you.
I don't know if I like the way you said that.
Well, I applaud us.
No, I...
Nobody will say anything to you.
I just... I got an ear stuck. I'm sorry.
I'll be here in the morning with my working clothes on, and I will be... Yeah.
We got... Okay. I'd like for you to make that motion too, but we're not through. Number six, I need a motion to approve.
Yeah, we're not through.
Uh-huh. No, no, you don't get to go over there. We all got it on our mind, but no. Number six.
We didn't do the last two.
Need a motion to approve, uh, the pay adjustment for... I can't read my own writing. Michelle... Oh, I'm sorry. For... Adjustment for this... The pool for adjustment for Ms. Shirley Paul.
I make motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Motion carried. Number seven, need a motion to approve to ask the CPA and pay him for printing off of twelve bills that Michelle's unable to print when he comes to do payroll.
The two of them are refunds. One of them, the ten are...
But they're twelve checks.
Yeah, they're check.
I make motion to approve.
Discussion. All in favor? Motion carried. Um, I will let you know that I actually said number eight was... Because we were discussing it. The hiring of the temporary clerk is going to be number six. Ms. Paul's gonna be number seven.
I'm missing one.
The checks is gonna be...
I got...
Oh, you mean you gotta reach out on...
Four. I got four as the proven of temporary. Oh, not four. Five is...
Yeah.
See my right?
There's eight of them.
Yeah. I don't have any eight.
Okay, starting from four, Michelle, there's, uh...
With proven drive.
Uh, then there was the temporary hire discussion. That's number five. That's where we hired Karen. And then six is the pool adjustment.
Right.
Seven is the CPA approval. And eight, I need a motion to adjourn.
Can I just get clarification? Am I gonna draft a contract?
No, she's leaving on...
Okay, I just wasn't clear about that.
Okay, hold on. Before we get the motion.
With everything that happened a couple of weeks ago and stuff like that, I have hired a lawyer. The city attorney who asked me that the city would be having to pay for this lawyer.
Okay, I filed a claim, not a lawsuit, it's a big difference.
And there's other things too.
So you're saying, what are you asking for? You're saying that...
It's for the city to pay for my lawyer.
The city is paying for the attorney. So it falls within our insurance, is that what, Ms. Jordan?
No, it's... Reminder saying at this point, no, it would not be covered by your insurance. The, um, the authority is...
We're buying.
Well, it... There's been a complaint about against him in the course of carrying out his public duties, and generally, you're entitled to advance.
I understand. Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn again.
Discussion? Meeting adjourned.